Good morning and welcome to the May 17, 2017 Board of County Commissioners Meeting. I'm Kate Flavin, Public Information Officer for Sedgwick County. Commissioners, you have a short agenda today. We have three proclamations and several new business items to address. And before we get started, I would like to introduce you to Chris Bennett, a member of Sunrise Rotary Club, to talk with you about the boundless playscape and some new activities coming up.
Thank you for the opportunity to update you on our playscape at the Sedgwick County Park. I am a member both of the West Sedgwick County Rotary Club and then also the smaller committee that is working to raise money along with the county for an update to the playground. I thought I might just briefly tell you a couple of things that we are trying to finish up for 2017 as part of a bigger scope that we have for the playground. We are obviously continually in a monetary raising mode. We are looking at grants. We are working with the county on some grant writing. We're doing some grant writing through individual resources and recommendations. And then we're continually going to individuals and businesses asking for donations for the playground. We are anticipating a fall 2017 completion of a project called the Amazing Maze. And there's a picture of it. There's actually two pictures of it right there in front of you. It will be completed with a combination of some grant money, some in-kind donations, and then an individual donation. And it will be a permanent installation at the south end of the playground. The mazes will be created by metal fabrication boxes planted with native grasses. The surface will be boundless, so anyone in a wheelchair or a walker can access this maze. And we are in the construction phase of it right now for the boxes that will contain the grass. The final thing is an invitation to you with a wardrobe recommendation in front of you. We're giving you all a Sunrise Playground tee-shirt. And we would like to invite you to the work day that we have scheduled on Saturday, June 13th, or 3rd, excuse me, June 3rd, starts at 8:00 and runs until 10:00. You are more than welcome to come and watch or come and be a part of. Bring your grandchildren to play at the playground if you have some, or children. At 9:00, we will install what's called a generational swing. And there's a picture of it attached to the tee-shirt. And the swing is designed for a child and an adult to face each other and swing. And it will be attached to a structure that is already in place on the playground. The county purchased it and will formally install it on the 3rd also. So that is all I have, and thanks again for the opportunity to speak.
Well, thank you for being here. We appreciate the update, and we want to, you know, give you our best wishes for successful fundraising drive and for a good event on June 3rd. But thank you for the tee-shirt, and my wardrobe can't stand a little improvement, so thank you. And, but we are happy to be partnering with the Westside Rotary to make this asset in our community as valuable as it's proven to be. So, thank you for being here. But we do have a comment here from Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Briefly, I want to thank the Sunrise Rotary Club for doing this project. I know I have a couple of grandkids, and they love going out to this facility. I think it's a great addition to Sedgwick County Park, and I certainly do hope that we can do whatever we can to make sure that this becomes a reality. Thanks for what you're doing.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks for being here today.
Thank you. And Commissioners, I have one final reminder. This is our final meeting of the month of May. Our next meeting will be Wednesday, June 7th.
All right. Thank you, Kate. I'd like to also welcome everybody who's here in the room today and those who are watching by way of television. And at this time, I will call to order the regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners May 17, 2017. Madam Clerk, first item.
In vocation, to be led by Pastor Bob Beckler, Central Community Church, please remain standing for the flag salute.
Good morning. It's good to be with you. Would you pray with me? Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day because we know that every day we have is a gift from you. Help us to remember, Lord, that how we live this day is our gift back to you. I pray, Lord God, that we would also remember that we make our plans, but you order our steps, and there's no other way that we would have it. Thank you for these men and the many people that have gathered here today to help make our community what it is. I thank you that it is a safe place. I thank you for that it's an environment, Father, where growth is occurring and will continue to occur. And I pray, Lord God, that you would help these individuals who are leading us to dream dreams that are going to make impacts, not just in our nation and in our state, but all around the world. Thank you for their service to this community and bless them in a mighty way. And it's in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Beckler, thank you for being with us this morning. Appreciate it. Next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Ranzau.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Present.
Chairman Enruh.
Present. And next item?
Public agenda.
Commissioners, we've had one citizen sign up to speak this morning and on an item that's not on our agenda, so we'd ask Mr. Theo Harris if he'd want to step the podium. And you have five minutes to make your remarks.
My name is George Theo Harris, 3603 Skinner Street, Wichita, Kansas. County Commissioners, County Manager. I come to you today, I graduated from WSU magna cum laude. Now, hell, I just barely graduated. But I did get an A in map reading. And Mr. Enruh was gracious enough to hand me the Cedric County map. So, looking at this map, I see here Wichita's right here, and then the county surrounds it. So Wichita's not here, and the county's here. You surround us. So I come to you asking that Wichita's, their animal control is getting ready to change their fees and fines. We thought you guys were going to, so we were leading our city board to try and match yours, but it looks like we're going to put ours out before you do. And we hope that you can, unless you find them egregious or out of whack, that you can probably try to get them close to it. I've talked with all you Commissioners. One of you has said that you want to be on an island and be all different than the city, but quite honestly, I think you should embrace us because we make up 70%. Over at the animal control, they deem dogs dangerous. Their ordinance is real similar to yours, other than on yours, the dangerous animals that tells if you have a dangerous dog what to do, what to, you know, what to do about that? Well, quite honestly, in Wichita, and I can't get the 2013 or 2014 figures, but let's just say they're around 42 or 43, because in '15, it was 49 dogs deemed dangerous, and '66 and 2016, which is 200, okay? And if you make up 30% of the population of Wichita, 30% times 200 would be 60. So roughly, you guys should have 60 dogs that had been deemed dangerous. That would just, so, how many have you guys had deemed dangerous in four years? Zero. I've talked to 30 people. 30 people find it just appalling, just ludicrous, unbelievable, that you haven't had a deemed dog deemed dangerous. Tells you what a dangerous dog is here, but then it goes on to what happens if? Well, you've never had one in four years, so there's no, we don't even need that section, I guess. You must have the nicest dangerous dogs in the world, because not one of them has been deemed dangerous. So we need to do something about that, and I hope you find that as out there as I do, because there's a problem. There's a disconnect or something. So, and then there's one thing here, if you did deem a dog dangerous, the likelihood of attacks or bites in the future. And Wichita has that same thing. And I asked them, how a dog bit or attacked someone, and it says here, will it do it again in the future? Well, unless it's had a lobotomy, or it's had some couch time somewhere, why wouldn't you think it would bite or attack again? So I find that just crazy. But I'm hoping that you guys can get on board and look at these numbers and find out that we have a problem. Quit, quit. Oh, I thought there was a dog bite, not me, but I'm sorry. But, so yeah, I would hope that you would look at the numbers and work with the city on this, because I think there should be a partnership here, not we do this and we do that. So I hope you really look at that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Howell has a comment or question here.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I really don't have a question, just want to make a couple of comments about what you said. Thank you for being here this morning. Thank you for pointing out the fact that we've never had any dogs deemed as dangerous dogs in the county. I did not know that. That's interesting information. I'd like to dig into that a little bit. You've certainly brought an interesting point for us to go figure out and analyze, and so I appreciate that. I know you've been very focused on this issue for a long time, and some of your colleagues as well have been really working on this issue a lot. I know City of Wichita's been doing a lot, trying to find out ways to solve some of the concerns, and I think one of your colleagues has pointed out, and I think the numbers are a little bit, we're not sure the numbers, I'm not sure which numbers are the right numbers, but I've either heard 10th or 16th the most dangerous city in the country on dog bites. But having said that, 80% of the county is inside the city of Wichita, so we certainly do need to care about the topic as well, and I appreciate that. I will tell you that in the county, one of the things I've learned, I think all of us probably have learned this, but when you knock on doors out in the county, there's a lot of hidden fences. And I've been knocked over by dogs that will surprise me, and I was on their property, trying to talk to someone about representing them in the county in this position. And it's a very normal thing to do, to go on someone's property and try to, just to talk with them, you know, a friendly discussion, but you get surprised by a dog, and it happens quite a lot. So I am too also concerned in terms of borders, policies that change at a border. That probably does need to be a review, I would guess. You know, again, most of the city, most of the population in Sedgwick County is in the city of Wichita, but there is a border that's very jagged around the city, and people may not realize when they cross the border that the rules might change. And so it is an area we need to look at, and I appreciate you bringing that to our attention this morning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. And just as a point of information, I'd want to let the folks who are watching know that we do have an Animal Control Advisory Board who will take up this issue and bring recommendations to us, so. I don't have anyone else who has signed up to speak, so we'll go on with the rest of our agenda, but before I call the next item, I just want to recognize the mayor of the city of Wichita has come into our meeting and will be addressing us here in just a short while. So glad you're here, Mr. Mayor. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, regular meeting minutes of April 12, 2017.
Commissioners, you've had the opportunity to review the minutes of April 12, and 19, and 21, 2017. Are there any additions or corrections?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the minutes of April 12, 19, and 21.
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, call the vote, please.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Chairman Enruh.
Aye. Next item, please.
Proclamations. Item D, proclamation declaring National Foster Care Month.
Commissioners, I've asked Commissioner Howell to read this proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Proclamation. Whereas every May, National Foster Care Month provides an opportunity to all people across the nation to focus on the year-round needs of American children and youth in foster care, and whereas there are 900 children and youth in kinship and foster care in Sedgwick County, and many of these children and youth have undergone trauma and can overcome adversity, and whereas the kinship, care, and foster parents are individuals committed to the success of these children and youth with the goal of providing a bridge to healthy family experiences, so families may be reunited. And whereas, kinship and foster care takes a community, including volunteers, mentors, employers, faith-based organizations, agencies, and donors. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, David M. Enruh, Chairman of the Board of County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim May 2017 as National Foster Care Month, and call on everyone to recognize and thank our current kinship and foster parents while realizing the need to recruit more help for these programs. The number of children and youth in custody is increasing, and kinship and foster care helps keep our local children and youth in Sedgwick County.
Commissioners, you've heard the proclamation. What's the will of the board?
Commissioner, or Chairman, I would make a motion we would approve the proclamation.
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Chairman Enruh.
Aye. And accepting the proclamation this morning is Julie White, is that correct?
Yes.
Would you like to say a few words?
Yes, thank you so much for this opportunity. We just want to recognize that this is such a need, and we appreciate that you recognize that as well, and that we have established this being our Foster Care Month. In Sedgwick County, you know, you stated that we do have 900, over 900 kids in care in Sedgwick County. Currently, we have a need of 143 kids that are outside of Sedgwick County because we do not have enough homes here in the county to place children. I'm a foster care, I'm a foster parent as well, and so this need is, I've seen it firsthand, the need that is so great for children to stay connected in their schools, their communities, churches. So we do appreciate so much that you have put the proclamation into Sedgwick County for us, because we just want to raise as much awareness for these kids as possible, because we do want them to have stability and a better future.
Well, thank you for giving us the opportunity to publicize this and make it known a little bit more. We need to be continually reminded and appreciate the ministry you have in our community.
Thank you.
But we have a comment here from Commissioner Howell.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to say, I really do appreciate the very difficult work that you all do there at St. Francis, and I know a number of foster parents in this community, and I am so impressed. They pour themselves into these children. Many of them have their own children as well, and as I've gotten to know them, I'm just so impressed. I'm thankful that there's someone out there that is stepping up to provide these homes of care, and I am very much impressed. Years ago, I was struggling with some issues, and someone recommended me to read some books. I did, and I really, just, these books moved me, is a series of books by the name, by the author Dave Pelser. I think you probably know them, and I read them a number of times, and I just was genuinely moved. The topic in the books, of course, is about foster care, and I would recommend those books to anyone. If you want to know more about foster care, I think there's a great need. I know we're doing a tremendous amount in Sedgwick County, and I'm looking forward to seeing more and more done to help these kids. It's not their fault, they're simply trying to grow up in a happy home, and so we need to do more and more with that. Appreciate all you do for the community. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Once again, thank you for being here.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Madam Clerk, next item.
Item E, proclamation declaring National Public Works Week.
Commissioners, I have a proclamation for your consideration. Whereas public works services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs, such as streets, highways, bridges, drainage improvements, environmental services, household hazardous waste, and noxious weed control, and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is especially dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is substantially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, David M. Enruh, Chairman of the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim May 21 through 27, 2017, as National Public Works Week in Sedgwick County, and I call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in public works and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. Commissioners, you've heard the proclamation. What's the will of the board?
Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt the resolution. Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, call the vote, please.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Chairman Enruh.
Aye. And receiving the proclamation this morning is County Engineer and Director of Public Works, David Spears.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, David Spears. Since 1960, APWA has sponsored National Public Works Week across North America. Our more than 29,000 members in the US and Canada use this week to energize and educate the public on the importance of the contribution of public works to their daily lives, planning, building, managing, and operating in the heart of our local communities and building the quality of life. There would be no community without the quality of life public works provides. The 2017 National Public Works Week poster theme is "Public Works Connects Us." As a cornerstone of civilization, public works provides, maintains, and improves the structures and services that assure a higher quality of life for our communities, and its streets, roads, and bridges keep us linked together from coast to coast and allow our communities to grow and prosper. Thank you for the proclamation.
Well, David, we're pleased to do this. We do this every year, and we want you and your department, all your staff, to know how much we value the hard work and the ingenuity and the value they bring to Sedgwick County systems. I mean, we need roads, we need bridges, and so we need those, the value that your department brings to our community, so we want to thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next item.
Item F, proclamation recognizing the 75th anniversary of Lake Afton.
And I have asked Commissioner Ranzau to read this proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Whereas Lake Afton is a 258-acre lake south of Goddard, which was constructed by the Works Progress Administration between 1939 and 1942, and whereas Sedgwick County purchased the land at $80 acre in 1938, and approximately 450 WPA workers built the lake by constructing a 4,000-foot dam on Clearwater Creek. And whereas Lake Afton has since been recognized as an area recreational destination, including being featured on the front cover of the June 1, 1959 edition of Life Magazine, and whereas Lake Afton Park currently occupies the 750 acres surrounding the lake and features the Lake Afton Public Observatory, public shooting range, park store, and many boating, fishing, and camping opportunities, including both RV and tent sites. And whereas over the last five years, Lake Afton Park has averaged, has had an average of 51,509 visitors per month during the camping season from April to October. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, David M. Enruh, Chairman of the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners, do hereby recognize 2017 as the 75th anniversary of Lake Afton in Sedgwick County, encourage all Sedgwick County citizens to visit Lake Afton and enjoy the many recreational opportunities available in the surrounding park.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioners, you've heard the proclamation. What's the will of the board?
Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt the proclamation. Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Chairman Enruh.
Aye. And receiving the proclamation is Mark Schroff, who manages all of our park facilities.
Morning, Commissioners. Thank you for your opportunity to be here today. Accept this on behalf of all the WPA workers that Commissioner Ranzau mentioned, as well as all the public that have used the park in the past, present, and will in the future, and also the support of this commission and previous commissions.
Well, Mark, thank you, and we just want to commend you and your staff for making this a really outstanding facility. It's clean, it's usable, it's in good repair, and your people make sure that that happens. And also, you've, in managing the park, you've been a good partner with other agencies in the community when they need a space like that to help, to help give them an opportunity. So, good job. We're proud of the asset, we're proud of what you do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item.
Appointment.
I'm sorry, Kate, we want to have a little video.
Lake Afton. More than 720 acres of fun, all within a 20-minute drive from Wichita. Join us as we take a look inside the park.
I think the biggest draw for this lake is its proximity to Wichita and the big city. It's close, it's convenient.
There's something for everyone. Boating, swimming, water skiing, fishing, camping, looking at the stars, and much more. Tom Ames has been coming out to the lake for 10 years. This flying field on the west side of the lake is open to the public for sport and hobby flying.
This is one of the very best places to fly in the whole state, actually. Lots of open space, real nice runway. It's just a great facility for us. We really appreciate being able to come out here.
Maybe you're looking for the catch of the day.
Bread and butter fish for Lake Afton is, of course, the catfish. The largest catfish that I'm aware of that's been caught out of here weighed 86 pounds back in the late 80s.
Or just a little piece and quiet.
Clear night. You can see and hear everything. You see all the lanterns, you can hear people talking. It's just an amazing sight to see.
And the excitement continues.
It's been a popular spot for people to attend and visit, and it continues today.
Celebrating 75 years of fun in the sun.
I think this lake is cemented in its timeframe. It's going to be here for many, many more years to come.
Well, thanks for that video, Kate. I'm sorry that I almost went by that. It's a great video. It really shows the opportunities we have out at that park, which is an asset for our community, but, and Mark, you did a great job. You're a movie star also.
Oh, thank you very much.
It's all right. All right, now I think we're ready to move on. So, Madam Clerk, next item.
Appointments. Item G, resolution appointing Tara Lovelace to the Rockford Township Treasurer position to fill the unexpired term of Benny Cummins.
Mr. Chairman, Eric Yost, County Counselor, the item G is a resolution appointing Tara Lovelace to the Rockford Township Treasurer position. This position had been held by Benny Cummins, who resigned in February. Commissioner Howell is recommending that Ms. Lovelace be appointed. Her term would expire January 11 of 2021. I'm informed that she is not present to be sworn in. I'm informed that she is not present to be sworn, and I would urge adoption of this resolution.
All right. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to say, I want to say I appreciate Bernie Cummins. He has served the entire last term. That was over four years. Plus, he was involved in the township even before that. As far as I say, I thank him for his service. Reluctantly, I think he stepped down. He had some personal issues he needed to deal with, which was fine, but trying to find someone to fill his position has been very hard. So, I have talked to Tara about this for quite a long time. She understands the responsibilities of the job, and I think she'll do a great job. So, I am pleased to make this motion this morning. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adopt the resolution appointing Tara Lovelace to fill the unexpired term of Rockford Township Treasurer.
Second. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Chairman Unruh.
Aye. And she will be sworn at an appropriate time. Next item, please.
New Business. Item H, Joint Ordinance and Resolution to Request the Wichita Valley Center Flood Control Project to be Renamed in Honor of MS Mitch Mitchell.
Mr. Chairman, Eric Yost, County Counselor. Item H is a joint ordinance and resolution with the City of Wichita to rename the Wichita Valley Center Flood Control Project in honor of MS Mitch Mitchell. This was a matter discussed several weeks ago by this commission. It's my understanding that the City of Wichita did pass a similar measure yesterday. And the Mayor of Wichita is here today and has some remarks he'd like to make.
So, we'd like to invite the mayor to step the podium and address this item.
Chairman Unruh, Commissioners, County Manager, I have nothing but love to bring over from the City of Wichita. I even have love for Tom Stoltz today, so I want to, I want to thank you all for, you know, the collaboration that we've been doing. Last week, we collaborated on making some riverfront improvements. This week, we're coming together to honor a significant person who's changed our city and our county, and I think it's the only proper thing to do. We did pass it unanimously on consent. I resisted the urge. Our friends at one of the television stations tried to corner me for an interview, and I said, "I promise Chairman Unruh, I will not talk to the media until we come jointly here today." So, I come sharing that we did pass unanimously, looking forward to this opportunity collectively to rename that floodway. And I just truly appreciate the collaboration that we've been experiencing and appreciate what you all are doing. So, thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's well said, and we're eager to rename this significant part of our community in honor of a person who was really instrumental in bringing it to pass. So, and working together with the city on this issue's been encouraging to all of us as we think about future challenges. But I really appreciate that you all have came over here this morning to indicate the collaboration that we have together. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And before we go to the actual item, I'm wondering if Mr. Wes Gallion wanted to make a comment. Who is, Mr. Gallion is President of the Wichita Area Home Builders and had worked very closely with Mr. Mitchell.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Port of County Commissioners. I'm Wes Gallion. I represent the Wichita Area Builders Association. It's mine to be here this morning to represent the family and friends of MS Mitch Mitchell, talk to you a little bit about him, and ask for your support of this joint resolution. I began a career in the Builders Association about 30 years ago. Hadn't known Mitch Mitchell well up until that point, but after his retirement, he was very involved in our organization, and I got to know him quite well. We traveled to many meetings and conferences together, worked on projects together and what have you. And I had an opportunity during that 30 years to work with a lot of people, and there was no question but what Mitch was truly a standout, and for good reason. The knowledge and experience he possessed about a variety of subjects and things he had been involved with, his willingness to become involved and committed to dealing with issues and things that he felt would make a real difference in the community, the great inside patience and persistence to get things done that he constantly displayed in his ability to engage and work with varied public and private sector interests in a considerate and balanced way in order to achieve success. After getting to know him well, and Mitch didn't talk a lot about himself at all, and he had to get to know Mitch in order for him to, you know, get an in-depth conversation with you much. But people were attracted to him and wanted to be around him because he, just the impression he gave and the persona that he displayed, and they wanted to know what he knew about this, ask him about that, and so on, and that happened throughout his life. After getting to know him well, he shared with me his perspective on the importance to the greater community of a project he became involved in or with beginning in the late 40s, and that after it was finished and people learned more about his involvement with it and the significance of it, has come to be commonly referred to as the Big Ditch and him as Big Ditch Mitch. By any standards of measurement, the project was a phenomenal undertaking that would take 10 years to complete. It cost at the time that it was underway approximately $20 million to save, promote, protect the city and county property for decades to come. The project required the purchase of 6,000 acres of rights-of-way, involved 41 separate contracts for construction of 97 miles of protective levee, embankments, and 40 miles of channel excavation. Putting it mildly, the Big Ditch was an impressive undertaking from an engineering and civic standpoint. The project itself was nominated for the Outstanding Civil Engineering Award by the American Society of Civil Engineers as one of the top 12 engineering feats in the United States in 1960. And at that time, at the time of its completion, it was the largest diversion structure in the United States. If you ask Mitch what he did, he would sometimes, you know, depending on who he was with, he'd respond, "Well, I was this and I was that." But what he most commonly said, well, he says, "I'm a ditch digger." And that's how he often referred to, have him referred to as himself as. And today, I just want you to know, he would be in awe of the honor that you're going to bestow on him by pursuing the change in name of the Big Ditch to the MS Mitchell, Mitch Mitchell Floodway. And on behalf of his family and his friends, I want to thank you for the honor you bestowed upon him by passing this resolution.
Well, thank you for your comments, Mr. Gallion. And you've indicated that Mr. Mitchell had extensive and profound influence in many areas of the commercial construction life here in Sedgwick County, but we're especially focused today on the, on the Big Ditch that he engineered and got produced. I think perhaps we have a video about that this morning, and now would be a good time to show it.
Wichita was built on a flood plain. Early settlers even called the area from hillside to ridge road swampland. In the 1800s, several large floods hit the area, but it wasn't until after the 1944 flood that left more than 5,000 temporarily homeless, the city started a flood control committee. That's where MS Mitch Mitchell, or Big Ditch Mitch, comes into the story. After just 10 days on the job as an office engineer, he was sent out into the field.
They made me wade through about a foot and a half of water. Now, I'm in my office dress and shoes, and they made me wade through the water to get to the road where the drive was.
And what started out as a six-week commitment to the project led to a lifelong career with the City-County Flood Control Office.
A lot of planning went into how many of those local flooding systems can be incorporated in that particular project, and Floodway was the only way to do it.
But convincing everyone it was a good idea was another story.
There was a tremendous amount of objection to the acquisition of right-of-way for that. "We don't have any flooding up here, and you're ruining my field, and you're cutting off the highway," and all of those things, that they did not recognize the importance of that diversion.
The design for the Wichita Valley Center Floodway was modeled after one Mitchell saw in California.
They were very helpful. They sent us their manuals for construction of the lining, for the maintenance of the lining, how these things should be under-drain systems. So, they gave us the design work for what you see on the paved canal now. The main project was the diversion of the Little Arkansas River, some water from the Chisholm Creek system, and some water from the Arkansas River through what became known as the Big Ditch. There were people saying, "You can't do that. You can't put that little river water in the big river." Well, we did.
And that Big Ditch has been his legacy.
All right, thank you for that video, and thanks to Big Ditch Mitch. We appreciate his contribution to our community, and I happen to be one of those people who lived in, near the area, grew up around First Street and Hydraulic, and there was flooding back then. I remember it as a, as a child, and so I'm not trying to tell you how old I am or anything, but I'm just saying, it was a real problem, and Mitch helped us solve it. So, Commissioners, now would be time to have a comment before we make a motion. Commissioner Howell.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for the opportunity to speak this morning. I, I got to know Mitch Mitchell as a Commissioner mostly. I met him a few times before I got to be in this seat here. I've always been in my, I've always been one that admired him. He's a tremendous man. He is very confident. He knows so much about so many things. He's one of our experts when it comes to stormwater. I know right now we're dealing with, dealing with some stormwater in districts two and five down south right now, and even recently, we've talked with him about ideas and things like that. He's just a tremendous resource. I know just recently, I've attended the Stormwater Advisory Board a few times in the last year, and he was still chairing that committee. I'm just so impressed with his dedication to the subject matter, and he's always been a tremendous individual. As I've gotten to know him, I've gained more and more respect for him, and so when he passed away, unfortunately, on March, March 11th of this year, it just became obvious that we needed to honor him and his legacy. There's a tremendous amount of history around him and what he accomplished so many years, so many years ago, and literally, I think, billions of dollars of savings to our community over the years. Again, I don't, my comments are not nearly as eloquent as the mayor's and as Mr. Wes Gallion's, but I just want to say, I think that this is absolutely the right thing to do today, and I hope as we move forward, that the name that becomes common to the, to the Big Ditch, we'll start using his name with affection by all. I hope that I will start using the name Mitchell Floodway as a short name perhaps, but the full name being MS Mitch Mitchell Floodway. I'm very honored to see that being done today, and I'm so glad that the city and county are coming together once again, do something that makes sense. Mr. Chairman, I want to make sure that people understand that by passing this today, we still have one more gate to get through, and that would be Congress. This has got to go to our federal delegation, and they've got to actually pass federal legislation, and it requires a signature of the president, and once that, that is done, then it becomes official. I'm sure that this community at that time will probably will celebrate Mitch Mitchell once again. Mr. Chairman, I'm sure this is the right time, but I would be, I would be pleased to make a motion this morning that we would, we would approve the joint ordinance and resolution and authorize the chairman to sign this, this joint resolution this morning.
Thank you for the motion. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to second the motion, but I'd like to make a couple of comments, if you don't mind.
Please do.
I first met Mitch almost 20 years ago when I first moved to Wichita in a meeting with Wes Gallion over at WABA, and I thought, "Wow, who is this real gruff, bearded guy that I didn't know?" That I wasn't sure if he was my friend or not at that point. About five or six years later, I had the honor of being appointed to the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission, and one of the first people that I got to know, and I think he was one of the first chairman of that when I was first appointed to the MAPC. And again, as I was getting to know him, he was kind of a gruff chairman, too. But probably one of the most knowledgeable individuals of flood control and what was happening as far as drainage in Sedgwick County. I learned terms about toe of a Big Ditch. I didn't even know that the ditch had a toe, but I learned that, that there is such a thing as a toe on the ditch, on the burms, on the sides. But he and I didn't always agree on everything that came before the MAPC, but I truly respected everything that he did and everything that he said, and he was a gentleman that I had the honor of serving with for off and on as he was on and off the MAPC for almost nine years. And he'll be missed, and I think I'm very honored that I can second this resolution and jointly work with the City of Wichita to, hopefully in the near future, once our congressional delegation gets this pushed through, that we can recognize the Big Ditch for, who truly made this something that we can be proud of. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. I don't see any other Commissioners asking to speak. We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, would you call the vote?
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Chairman Unruh.
Aye. And once again, I want to thank the mayor and Wes Gallion and other friends of Mitch Mitchell who are here to join in this celebration this morning. So, thank you all for that. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item I, Quarterly Interest Bank Arena Report.
Lindsay Porusso, your CFO. I am pleased this morning to be able to present to you the first quarter 2017 status update on Interest Bank Arena. A.J. Bellesky, the general manager for the arena, is here with us today and will be sharing in the presentation with me as we did last time. And I also want to thank Deb Zavala, the intern in the manager's office, who assisted with putting this presentation together. So, as with past presentations, you've seen, our discussion points today will focus on the SMG agreement, including the quarterly report information you're used to seeing, the City of Wichita event parking information, the sales tax reserves, the authorized uses, along with its current status, and of course, upcoming events. So, we reiterate this each time. SMG was contracted with by the county in 2007 to operate the downtown arena. SMG promotes, operates, and manages the facility to ensure the provision of high-quality management services, thereby enhancing the use and enjoyment of the arena. Under a unique arrangement where a publicly-owned facility is operated by a private entity, the arena actually has, will bear, or SMG, I'm sorry, will absorb any operating loss in the course of a year of the contract. So, moving then into the actual quarterly report itself, we'll talk about ticket sales. A.J., we'll talk to you about some of the community of, specific community service projects, but I'll give you an update on how those community affairs look from a fiscal basis, and then we'll go through the financial summary. So, this slide that you're seeing now compares year-to-date results through March of 2017 with the same time period last year. You can see that this year, there have been 45 performances thus far, with 143,691 folks in attendance, 131,843 tickets sold, for gross ticket sales of just less than $4 million, while bringing the average cost per ticket to just more than $30. In all categories, you'll see that there's improvement over 2016. There were about 2,700 more in attendance, about 7,400 more tickets sold. Gross ticket sales were up 1.5 million, and the average cost per ticket sold was more than $10 over the same average ticket price in the same quarter last year. So, in terms of community affairs, I know that this is information that always interests Commissioners. Through the first quarter of 2017, there were fewer groups that volunteered in the concession stand by 10, and therefore, the amount paid out to those groups then was lessed by about $58,000. Spending with Kansas companies, you can see, was up fairly significantly, $437,958.79. Sales tax paid also was up 438, or I'm sorry, it was $438,293.58, which is $157,415.01 more than last year. There were a couple more presentations and tours at the arena, and one more local event and activity. So, then moving into the financial summary, it's important that we all know the terms that we will be talking about. Net direct event income is rental income and service revenue less service expenses. Net... Net food, beverage, and merchandise income is food and beverage concessions, food and beverage premium seating, the percent of merchandise sales, less the cost of goods sold and labor. And then other net income includes luxury box ticket sales, ticket service fees and facility fees. Other operating income includes select a seat, other venue ticket service fees because again, the arena does operate the ticketing system for select a seat for all those other venues. Loge box and club seat agreements and advertising and sponsorships. So, gross building income is the result of all of those things added together and then of course, net building income would be that gross building income, any other operating income, less the building operating expenses. So, we'll talk about some of those categories as we move through this next part. As we talked about before, there were 45 performances at the arena through the first quarter of 2017. Of those, there were 35 total events. You can see the bulk of those were family shows, but there are also some pretty big concerts we heard about, some sporting events, 15 Thunder Hockey Games, a couple indoor football games for the Wichita Force totaling those 45. So, the total net event income was just under 1.4 million. Other operating income was 404,000 for a total gross building income of $1,792,301. When we take into account those indirect expenses of about 1.3 million, that leaves net building income for the first quarter at $488,000. This slide is the exact same information because of where we are in the year, but as we move through the year, that will be updated and you'll see some additional information come into play. We've already talked a little bit about the 2017 and 2016 information, but this slide shows the number of events. Again, sometimes there can be multiple performances of the same event, so maybe a Disney on Ice or Cirque du Soleil that may have multiple shows. So, the net event income you can see from this time in 2016 to 2017 is actually pretty good, $560,774. For income categories, you can see that there was a slight decrease in other operating income from last year to this year for the first quarter of 2017 and 16, about $9,700. Total gross building income however, was up by just more than $550,000. Taking into account then our indirect expenses, you can see that there was actually a slight decrease in how much expense we had, 1.32 million in 2016 versus 1.30 million in 17. For net building income, you can see that through this point in time last year, there was actually a deficit. Expenses were greater than the income. This year, as we already talked about a couple of slides ago, that's actually up $488,000 for a difference of $567,220. So, then shifting to the sales tax reserves, again, the sales tax reserves is something that the county carries on its books. It includes those remaining sales tax funds from that one cent sales tax, any reimbursements of signage, infrastructure, and then proceeds from the sale of property acquired for the project that subsequently determined to be unnecessary. So, the authorized uses of that fund include major repairs or capital equipment. If we needed to pay the city for use of those parking lots, the fund could be used, but we haven't had to do that. And then parking operations and maintenance for that lot at Second and St. Francis. So, speaking of the capital repairs, capital improvements, AJ will be giving you an update when he comes up here about that North Entrance, Entrance C, the remodel that's happening that you all approved. So, just know that part is coming up in the presentation. So, as it stands now, at the end of March, that sales tax reserve fund balance is $11,403,349.92. You can see that in March, there were $48.65 worth of expenses for copies of plans, which reduced that just slightly from where we were at the beginning of the month. This slide will show you how that has changed over time. So, during the first presentation at the beginning of this year, wrapping up 2016, you saw that there was some revenue that came into the fund as a result of the operating agreement between SMG and the county. We received some funds that went in there and so the year-to-date March 2017 amount maybe isn't as much as we've reported when we've taken into account capital improvements and that Arena Entrance C project because we are contrasting those two years and we do have some revenue that has come in since then, so that the net difference is about And with that, I will turn it over to AJ.
Good morning Commissioners. AJ Beleski, General Manager for SMG and Interest Bank Arena. What you see before you is our quarterly report of our community service projects. Just at the top right there, you see the Wamigo Community Health Ministry of Food and Beverage Donation. Sometimes we actually donate, whether it's hot dogs or popcorn or we've done burritos, breakfast burritos before for certain community events that have come to us and we've been part of those. So, that's what that is. A lot of ticket donations on this list as we scroll throughout the pages here of community We may have talked about this last time, but our annual report came out this past April and we were around. It was roughly about $40,000 a year that we do in ticket donations to nonprofit organizations. So, we're pretty proud of that. We like to be involved in those. Dress for Success, our staff participated in that fundraiser as well. As you can see, there's a lot of pages of ticket donations. So, coming up to upcoming events, we have George Lopez and DL Hughley this weekend. It's Saturday night at the arena. We'll be using our half-house configuration. That half-house allows us to do some shows that we wouldn't otherwise be able to do because we can cut down and really look like a theater or cut down and use the lower bowl. So, we appreciate the flexibility that the county provided us in the building to be able to do these events, otherwise they wouldn't happen. Forest Football coming up May 27th. We have promoted a couple of events in the summer, the last couple of years. Dodge Brawl is one of them. It's a self-promoted event that we present. And then busy July this year, we've got Neil Diamond. I think it's about, been about 18 years since he last played the Coliseum, so we're really excited to bring him back to Wichita and to Sedgwick County. And then since we last spoke, we were able to, we appreciate Chairman Unruh's help in helping us make the announcement on Paul McCartney, who will be here July 19th. So, this is an event that we've been working on for several years, trying to bring him to Wichita. We always say it's not a matter of if, but it's a matter of when and of course, you know, it's this summer while we're under construction, but we're prepared for it and planning and making those accommodations, but it's going to be a great show. The community has supported it very well and we're just honored to be hosting him in July. And then you'll see the other events coming up later in the fall to McGraw. We'll get back into Thunder Hockey and we'll be making more announcements here in the next couple of months for the fall and winter months. We also, since we last met on April 18th, we were able to work with several organizations in town, Wichita State being the host. We had several Commissioners there that day to help us make that announcement. Again, appreciate your help, Chairman Unruh at the podium that day, but we were able to announce NCAA tournament coming back. We've got it in 18, next year. We're getting ready for it right now, but we're also able to, pretty fortunate to be able to, while we're planning for one, announce a second one in March of 2021. So, I know that was one of the major reasons why this facility was built with the NCAA tournaments in mind and we are happy to be a small part of being able to bring the tournament twice in the next couple of years. That is it for upcoming events. Are there any questions on community involvement or upcoming events? I'll give a little bit of an update on the North Entrance.
I don't see anyone asking to speak right now.
So, we started the Entrance C project. Thank you again for approving that for us back in the spring. We started at April 10th. We have been working with, obviously with the county, with key construction and also WDM Architects on this project. If you've been by the building, you will see that we now have construction fenced up around the North Entrance, so we are utilizing entrances A and B for the majority of our events. We also utilize a stairwell on the north side for some of the bigger events. We just used it for Dirks Bentley a couple of weeks ago. Inside the arena, when you walk the concourses, you will see plywood from the top, from the floor to the ceiling. The construction company and us, all of us were very, we wanted it to look very professional and not just a sheet of plastic up. So, it's plywood, it's painted and then on top of that, we have banners, we've branded them. We've got lyrics from some of the acts that we've hosted that kind of tie into the construction process and we try to make it fun, colorful, and exciting while we go under this, under this construction. So, you've seen the walls and the fencing. In addition to that, there's a canopy out in front of the North Entrance. Everything has been removed from under that canopy. Parts of that canopy will be pushed out into the parking lot so that we can enlarge the lobby and add the stairwell. Part of the stairwell process is there was about, I think they told me 10 tons of concrete that had to be removed. That's kind of, this project all started with, one day we looked at each other and said, I wonder if that's load bearing. I wonder if we can remove that and put in some stairs or an escalator and the answer was yes. And so now, as of last week, they're actually removing that concrete. So, that was a big piece of work, big piece of the project for them. The next really big part of the project will be when they actually bring the stairwells in. They're already put together in one big piece, so they will bring those into the building. I think that's going to be like mid to late July when that will occur. So, that concrete landing that I just talked about, that's been removed. We've also, the hockey storage room, we've cut a doorway that goes into our storage room. That's part of the NCAA tournament planning, so the teams can get back and forth to the media area without going through the media. They'll be able to access the locker rooms. And then we've also built a vestibule in that storage room. It's a storage room, however, we're going to use it for the public when we host the tournament and so we've had to make some changes to it. One of them is changing the door so that it pushes out, hence we had to make, we had to build a vestibule. We're also going to build another exit out of that, a storage area that will go into one of our arena exit stairwells and then we're adding some air conditioning and some power to that room specifically for the tournament. There will be other events that benefit from it as well. We've used that room for some other types of events too, but the tournament, that's for, that was the big question when the NCAA came through our building is where can the media be? And that was the answer, was that room. So, that's kind of a small update. Our expected completion date is going to be probably around mid-November. We had a lot of rain the last couple of weeks, but it really hasn't slowed down the work at all because so much of it's inside, so it's pretty, it's been pretty easy for that key construction folks to choose where they're working one day or the other based on the weather. So, they've also been very cooperating with us, working around our events. Again, we're going to stay open and host events during this whole process, so they've been great and we've blacked out some days. We had Dirks Bentley, so they weren't that, they weren't there on that day. They won't be on the day we have Paul McCartney and Neil Diamond, but every other day this summer through November, they'll be there working. So, it's been a good project so far.
Well, thank you for that update AJ and there's no complications with the large crowd you'll have for the McCartney concert?
You know, we had a lot of takeaways when we hosted Garth Brooks a couple of years ago and we did the, we had, for the first time, we had done sold-out events, but we'd never really had 13,000 people in the arena with 13,000 more people waiting outside to get in for the next show. And so, in the course of that, we used some stairwells to get people out and get people in, stairwells that we hadn't used before. And so, we will take a lot of those into consideration for Paul McCartney and Neil Diamond and Tim McGraw in Faith Hill and we expect it to be seamless. We'll maximize the other two entrances as well, but yeah, we expect it to be, to be really good, but as a result of some of the planning we've taken from other events.
Well, have you or SMG been through this sort of remodel modification before and had to deal with this, with these issues?
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of part of running buildings and somebody asked, have you had to turn down any shows because of it? We've been very transparent with all the shows that we've hosted in saying, hey, look, one of our entrances will be under construction in the summer of 2017 through November. It hasn't bothered anybody, nobody's turned away as a result of it. Our building in Oklahoma City with the Thunder Play, they've gone under construction just about every summer at that facility. So, as an industry, we're pretty well used to it and we always make those plans to stay open and keep doing events while we're under construction.
Okay, well, we don't want to do this every year, so, but I'm glad to know that we have experience and that it doesn't hinder our, the use of the building and the shows that are coming, so that's good news. So, we do have a comment from Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was just curious, I think there's a piece of legislation moving right now that deals with some, I guess, alcohol outside in some public areas. Is that something that has, something that would happen around the arena or do you know anything about that legislation and what the status of that is?
I've been involved in some of the meetings and I know a lot of it has to do with around Union Station and also the Old Town area and some of the districts around us. It probably wouldn't impact us directly, but the way I see it is it would enhance the experience when you talk about, you know, several thousand people coming to town for the NCAA tournament and when they go to the restaurants and the establishments around us, if they're, if it's an easier experience and a better one, they're probably going to have a better overall experience in our community. And so, that's where it comes into play for us in the building, but I don't think it has a direct impact on us, but I think it's a good thing to see it happening around us. It's just going to create, we had Dirks Bentley two weeks ago and on the south side of the building, 360 Wichita, had a big party going on and on the north side of the building, at Lou's, the bar, they had an outdoor patio full of people and it was pretty exciting just to see the areas around us very engaged in activity and just, it was just a fun festive night outside the building and then also, once everybody came in, inside the building too. So, it's just going to enhance that experience.
And I always want to ask you about, last time I was over there, I think for one event, at least I saw some security measures in place and I'm not sure if it's used for every, every event, but have you been using, I guess, some scanners and things like that? Can you talk about that a little bit?
Yes, actually, we worked with the county to purchase the walkthrough metal detectors. I believe that was in February of 16, so it's been over a year that we've had those in place and before that, we did the magnetic wands. The walkthrough metal detectors have been a great resource for us. It's kind of a less intrusive, very much more consistent. It's, everybody's going through the same walkthrough, so it's also been more efficient in getting people into the building and we've, you're obviously going to have some lines when you have a big sold-out event, but for the most part, we've been able to move people pretty efficiently through the walkthrough metal detectors. There's also a major promoter in our industry that basically required all the venues that they host shows in to have these. And so, that was part of this project and that's allowed us to continue to do shows with this promoter.
Are there some events where you don't use those? I'm just, I'm just trying to...
We use them for every public event.
Every event, okay. That's what I was trying to find out. And then, you know, I would like to know more about the Dodge Brawl. I've heard a little bit about that, but I've never, I don't know very much. Can you please explain what that is?
Yeah, so it's local teams sign up. I believe it's teams of anywhere from six to eight or 10 folks sign up. They play a Dodge Brawl tournament, so just like back in the school days, we use the arena floor and there's no ice in the summer, so we chalk out, we tape out Dodge Brawl courts and I think we had three last year. Our staff loves this event. We had a great time putting it on and then the people that participated, I think we had about 25 teams last year. We're hoping that that number increases. They all had a great experience and probably best of all, the winning teams actually receive monetary awards and that award, they deem in advance what charity they wanted to get to. So, the top three, I think we had about $3,000 that went to three local charities last year as a result of some fun Dodge Brawl events.
Thank you for the explanation. I was wondering more about that, but I'm pleased that the OIM Fund is stable this report and thank you for the update on the construction on the north side. And I'm very pleased with the report overall this time. It's really great to hear all these good things and with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion we would receive and file.
Second. Thank you. We have a comment from Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you. I'd like to second that motion, but one quick question. I've heard rumors, but no one has talked to me officially about maybe recognizing a past WSU basketball player with a statue. Are they working with you on that or where are we at? All I've heard is rumors.
Well, I think Lindsey is going to...
Well, I'll take that one. We're still in the analysis stages. We're working with, we actually have a meeting about that today to talk with Lindsey and AJ and folks about going to the naming partners and talking with them about the concept and we're still doing the analysis and then we'll bring it back to the Commissioners to give you a recommendation based off of the analysis that we did.
Okay, and this is something that, it's no cost to Sedgwick County from what I understand?
No cost.
And there's a place that you can put it out there to recognize?
We're in the middle of those conversations now, so we haven't, we haven't gotten that far, but we do have some space available at the arena for sure, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thanks for the report, Lindsey and AJ. One question, the cost of the renovations has not yet hit that reserve. Is that correct? I mean, those...
It has, it's, the $1.6 million that's already been committed toward that project is actually reflected in, will be reflected, I believe, in the April numbers. So, you'll see that as an update.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. We have a motion to receive and file. We have a motion to receive and file, so Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Chairman Andrew.
Aye. Thanks again for the presentation. Next item.
Item J, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts, Regular Meeting on May 11, 2017.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. At the meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts on May 11, we discussed three items and have the following recommendations for you. Item number one is the Redmond Estates Street Improvements, Phase 2A, 2B, and 3 for Public Works. This recommendation is to accept the low bid from Flint Hills Materials in the amount of $397,836. Our item number two is in regard to software value-added resellers for various county departments. And the recommendation is to utilize the NASPO Value Point Master Agreements as listed under the State of Kansas Participation Addenda as listed, and establish contract pricing for the agreements through June 2, 2021. And our final item is in regards to various paper stock for various county departments. And this recommendation is to accept the low overall bids from Timber Creek Paper Incorporated for Items 1 through 39 and Items 45 through 48. And then Veritiv Operating Company, that are option number two, for Items 40 through 44, and establish contract pricing for one year with five one-year options to renew. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval of the three items.
Commissioners, are there any questions of Mr. Thomas? Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the item number two, the pricing's not available for us to see on the sheet. Can you, is there some way we can get access to that or...
Yes, sir. We'll send you an electronic copy or a paper copy. There were so many items on there, that's why we called it pricing and filing. But we will send it to you.
All right. That makes sense. And then finally, I would just make a comment. We buy a lot of paper. Thought we were kind of going towards a paperless direction, but I don't think that's what I see here. This is a lot of paper. And anyway, I just want to say, I'm glad you brought this to us. Mr. Chairman, I, apparently, I think Mr. Theo Harris has a comment on the Board of Bids and Contracts. If you're willing to accept a comment from the community on this.
Actually, it's on the consent agenda of...
Oh, I'm so sorry. Okay, on the next item, I'm sorry. Okay. With that, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we would accept the recommendations of the Board of Bids and Contracts.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Chairman Andrew.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Commissioner Howell, do you have another comment?
No, sir. I just, someone told me they want to talk on the next item. I guess it's the consent agenda he wanted to speak on, so not, we don't normally have commentary during that time, but if you're willing to recognize someone from the community that he, I think he has a comment on our consent agenda.
Well, let's have the item presented first, so.
Commissioners, Mike Scholes, County Manager, recommend your approved consent agenda items kilo through November.
All right, thank you. We have a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there a comment from someone in the public that wants to comment on this item, on one of these items?
Yes, on one of them.
Okay, if you'd want to step up here.
I came here earlier on the dog thing, but I feel like a blind squirrel that found another nut here. On the MABCD, Tom Stoltz knows that, I've been working with him for a long time. I was wondering how MABCD became city and county? And have you guys ever thought about combining animal controls? Have you ever thought about the police and the sheriff? How did, how did that become? And MABCD, as Tom will tell you, I've been asking for years, we're getting killed. Our neighborhoods are getting killed. We don't have enough inspectors. They're either sometimes retiring or whatever. And like I said, Tom will tell you, we've been asking for help, and we're just getting murdered in the cities, in the neighborhoods. So, so I plead with you guys. I've asked the city, I've been to the city manager, asking for more budget for MABCD. They seem to have always, they find money like under things or something over the city, but they can't give us more MABCD inspectors. And we definitely need them. So I don't know what part the county has in that. I know you guys are together now, but of course, you don't have as many inspectors out in the county, but we need help. And so, like I said, I saw this on here, and I finally, it looks like they're going to hopefully get a director at Tom's position, and that's great. But we've got a bunch of new inspectors, some retired, so we've got people just learning their jobs, and the ordinance violations are just going up and up and up and up. We need some relief. So I appreciate you letting me talk to you guys about that, but I don't want to just talk. I want to get some resolve. So I hope you guys can figure this out with the city and, but I also want to know how you, how you became MABC, city and county? And can we do some other city and county combines? And is that in the works for animal control or any of the other things? So thank you for your time.
All right, well, thank you for your comments, and perhaps another time we can go through the two or three-year process it took to combine our billing and code departments. The item in the consent agenda right now is hiring a new director, and so, but your comments will be taken under advisement with, and current person who's leading that, Mr. Stoltz, is right here and heard that as well, so. Is there any other comment? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Chairman Andrew.
Aye.
And next item?
Legislative issues.
Good morning, Commissioners. John Von Etchen, Assistant County Counselor. I apologize for delay. I'm trying to keep track of what's going on in Senate tax this morning. First, to address Commissioner Howell's question about the Suffer House Bill 2277 that passed the Senate yesterday as amended. It should be on for a motion to concur or non-concur in the House today. That would allow cities and counties to designate areas, outdoor areas for common drinking. Obviously, when we're talking about the arena, most of that area around the arena is city, but this would allow some other areas in the unincorporated area where the county may be asked at some point to consider that. And so, like I said, that's on to concur or non-concur today in the House. I did bring to your attention earlier in the week, and the hearing this morning regarding House Bill 2380, that involves a change in the sales tax exemptions. Among those that would now be subject to sales tax under the current version of the bill would be motor vehicle towing, mini warehouse and self-storage, collection agencies, investigation, security guards and patrol, security systems to exclude locksmiths, certain non-residential cleaning, and certain pet care to exclude veterinarians. Basically, these are all services that are currently not subject to sales tax. The other piece of the bill, which is, I think equally is interesting, and the one that we can actually figure out how it affects us, is that July 1, 2020, it would reduce the food sales tax with certain exceptions, down to 5.5% from the current 6.5%. Looking at the numbers the state has put out on what they think the revenue is going to be in upcoming years, for the next three fiscal years, they show an increase between $52 and $58 million. And then, when that sales tax piece kicks in, they show a deficit. So if it were to pass in its current form, we would have to be looking three years down the line at the potential that we would end up losing, losing sales tax revenue because of this. So I've, I've let you guys know about it. I have informed finance so that they can kind of take a look at it. It's kind of difficult to figure out how the increase would be for us because we'd have to figure out exactly what the value of those services are. We don't currently keep track of that because we don't tax those services. But we do know how much we bring in in food sales tax a year, so that's something that they can at least give an idea of three years down the line, what we'd be looking at as far as lost, lost revenue. That's all I have for this morning. I stand for any questions.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, are there any questions or comment? I see none. Johnson, thank you for that report.
Thank you.
Commissioners, we have need of a fire district meeting, so at this time, I will recess the regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners and call to order the Board of County Commissioners sitting as a governing body of Fire District Number One. Madam Clerk, first item.
Roll call. Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Present, sorry.
Commissioner Ranzau.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Here.
Chairman Andrew.
And I am here also, present. Next item.
Public agenda.
I don't know that there's anyone who's asked to speak, so we will ask for the next item.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, Regular Fire Meeting Minutes of April 12, 2017.
Commissioners, you've had the opportunity to review the minutes of April 12. Are there any addition or corrections?
Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt the minutes from April 12.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Madam Clerk, call the vote, please.
Commissioner Dennis.
No. Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Chairman Andrew.
Aye.
And next item?
New business. Item B, Charitable Donation Agreement with Pauline Weber Trust.
Good morning, Commissioners. Dan Wagner, Fire Marshal, Sedgwick County Fire District. We've received a donation of a house out in the western part of Sedgwick County from the Weber Trust. The house is being donated to be used for training purposes. We've done this in the past. This affords our department an opportunity to get as close to the real thing in training and tune our guys up a little bit more. So what I'd like to do is ask you to go ahead and sign the memorandum of agreement and the charitable donation for Mr. Weber. And by the way, Mr. Weber is in the audience back here. He just wanted to see the process and what was going on, so I don't think he really wanted to come up here and speak, but he is here to watch.
Okay, well, we're pleased that you took the time to be present with us to watch this process. We're also very pleased that you're willing to make this donation to our Fire District. Have a comment from Commissioner O'Donnell?
No, Mr. Chair. I was just going to make the motion.
Please.
Whenever. All right. I move that we approve the agreement and authorize the chairman to sign the agreement and the memorandum of agreement, and also thank you to the Weber family.
Very good. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Chairman Andrew.
Aye.
And Mr. Weber, we thanked you a couple of times already, but we want you to know that this is valuable to our Fire District to have this training opportunity. And so if folks, citizens, don't step up like that, then we just either have to find another way or we miss that opportunity. So once again, we appreciate it. Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Chief. I see nothing else to come before the Fire District, I don't think. Seeing nothing else, I will adjourn the Board of County Commissioners sitting as a governing body of Fire District One and call back to order the regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners, May 17. And Madam Clerk, call the next item.
Other.
Commissioners, are there other items that you'd like to bring before the board at this time? Seeing none, next item.
Executive session.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 30 minutes to consider preliminary discussions relating to acquisitions of real property, and that the Board of County Commissioners return to this room from executive session no sooner than 11:00 a.m. And this executive session is required to protect the county's financial interests and rights to confidentiality of its negotiating position.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Chairman Andrew.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I would suggest we meet in the manager's boardroom, if that's all right.
Okay, we can do that. We are adjourned to executive session.